We'll call this meeting to order, the City Council. It's November 5th. If you'd like to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Sure. Everyone is present, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve that agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Willing? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion on the motion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We have the council minutes for October 15. Oh, I guess we can do them both at the same time. There's it written on here. Minutes for the October 15 meeting, as well as the work session for October 22nd. Any concerns with those minutes at all? If not, we'll acknowledge both, as they've been prepared. We'll go on to the bills. Copy of the register? Questions?
I have one question.
Please.
The contract for your UNA County School District, that's a large chunk of money. What goes into that contract?
It's the water line?
That's for that water line, and that's our path.
Oh, okay. Okay. I was like, why are we giving the school district that much money?
I had the same question.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's an excellent question. Yeah, water line. It was kind of painful to sign that voucher, I can tell you. Ah, what is this? Any other, any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Perks? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Lynch.
Lynch, seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That takes care of the bills. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, what's on your mind tonight, sir?
Nothing tonight, there.
Okay. Mr. Lynch?
I hope everybody went and voted, because your vote makes a big difference. Whether or not, you think it does, it does. And if you didn't vote, you don't get a complaint about who gets elected. So, make sure you vote.
Absolutely.
Mr. Perks?
I was just gonna say something about the voting. Everybody got down there, they got about, what, an hour and a half? So, hopefully, anybody that wanted to vote got to.
And hopefully, everybody wants to.
Yes.
Yes. Excellent. Mr. Willing?
Just, uh, about the same stuff. Hope you voted. Flag, the overpass is open.
Yes.
It's nice to have open. Still trying to break the habit of going to the underpass. Just good to have it open, it looks nice. They did a nice job, so.
That's it. Mr. Sellers?
I agree on that overpass, since I go over it three or four times a day. And the night it had opened, I was like, oh! And that was, that was really, really nice. So, I'm gonna talk about a little bit different type of voting. We're getting into the holiday season, there's a lot of opportunity. People start spending a little bit more money, start doing a little extra. I'd ask people to use their dollars to vote at home, and spend what you can at home, support local business, support our main street businesses, support all of them, because they depend on us. And especially this time of year, the tourists are down. They really need us, support them, because people are being really tight on money right now. Things are getting harder for families, and if we can encourage people to shop home, be at home, and also by its winter time, we're getting cold. Depression starts to sit in, be mindful of those people around who might need a little extra support. You never know who it is. It might be somebody sitting right next to you that needs a little bit extra boost in life. And there's lots of resources, 9-8-8, and UNA Suicide Task Force has resources. There's, there's lots of things out there. So, that's all I have.
Ms. Eggman?
I'd like to echo the sentiments about voting. I think it's the most patriotic thing that any American can do. It is what sets us apart, and makes us so different as a nation. And the one thing I'd like to remind everybody, that no matter what your view is, in the end, we are all Americans, and we all come together. And even though you might have a difference of opinion, if it ever came down to somebody else, some other nation, some other country, going against us, your neighbor, the one that you don't have the exact same political views with, would be the first ones to stand beside you. And that's what being an American is all about. Also, we tend to forget that this is a government that is set up by the people and for the people. It does not end today with the election. If you do not like the turnout, and you do not keep watching, your politicians and the people that sit up here answer to you every single day of the year. And if you have somebody in office that you don't particularly prescribe to the views of, make sure you watch them double hard. And contact them. It is a nation that is set up by the people and for the people, and it does not end today. Keep watching, keep interacting, and keep all of our politicians on course.
I'll certainly say amen to the voting, voting issue relative to the overpass. It's good to see, I will say that I was asked, as it came closer, the rumor was that it was about to open, I, I did receive a phone call and ask if there was going to be a ribbon cutting, or a, or some kind of a ceremony, and, and I, and I thought, please, no, just open the thing, and let's go back to driving. So, I'm glad to see that open. That's a, that's a good thing for the community. We have no public hearing, special orders, or consent agenda, or no unfinished business. So, we'll go directly to new business, and we'll start there with Resolution 2469. Mr. Harris, should we read that title for us, please?
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2469, a resolution, the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the Second Amendment to the option and communication site lease with Union Telephone Company for the operation of a cellular communication tower at the site referred to as the Evanston Roundhouse.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, as Mr. Harris explained, this is an amendment to the current lease that exists. Union Telephone has a hundred by hundred square up there by the substation, right above the roundhouse. They're looking to expand that to 120 by 120, in an effort to put up a new tower. And this is the lease agreement for that.
Okay. It's on the hill, on the other side of the, other side of the road, right over there.
That's correct. Right behind the golf course, up on that hill, right next to the substation.
Okay. Seems pretty straightforward. Any questions before we move forward with this?
Top tower, putting up eighty feet.
Eighty feet?
Eighty feet.
This area that it's going into is agricultural zoning, and an eighty-foot tower is permitted.
Excellent. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Willing, with a motion. Mr. Sellers, seconding. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Tyler. Resolution 2470. Mr. Harris, read that title for us, please.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2470 is a resolution approving and authorizing the final plat for the MB Anderson addition, a subdivision within the city of Evanston, Wyoming, is more particularly described here.
I don't know why. I don't know who would. I don't know. Mr. Jacobson?
Okay, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mayor.
The MB Anderson addition is located at 261 Tomahawk Drive. Oops. And lost my map. Here we go. So, at 261 Tomahawk Drive, it's just along the southern boundary of Overthrust Metals Park, which you can see to the top of this screen on the aerial photograph. It is on a bend in the road, basically, functions as a cornered lot. The owner of the lot had gone to the planning commission and requested a conditional use permit to place a, a single-family attached dwelling, or duplex, on the property. That conditional use permit was granted. As part of the request, he will, will need to subdivide the property into two lots. So, we have Lot 1 at 3,634 square feet, Lot 2 at 3,495 square feet. There's not a minimum lot size requirement. This property is located in a low-density residential developing zone, so the minimum lots size requirement is based upon open space. There's a 5,000-square-foot usable open space requirement per dwelling unit. The structure that was proposed to be placed, straddling lots 1 and 2 are, it, it, they did not meet the minimum open space requirement, so they did request a variance to that. And on Lot 1, the variance also included an encroachment into the rear yard setback with the structure on Lot 1. That variance was also granted. Now, there is a six, or a 180-day period in which he would, I, the applicant would either have to commence use of the property, or start construction. That hasn't begun yet. He will be going to the Board of Adjustment at the December meeting of the Planning Commission, and ask for a time extension on that variance request. As I understand, his plans to construct will be coming this, this spring or early summer. So, there is an existing 10-foot utility cement that surrounds the lot. That's, remains in place with the lot split, so no, no big major changes. There, there is a, an existing water and sewer service line that's extended to Lot 2. He will need to extend an additional water and sewer service to Lot 1. The city subdivision review committee has reviewed this subdivision, the final plat of this subdivision. There are no concerns expressed with it, so they're on board. So, staff recommends approval of this subdivision. I've got four conditions listed in the report. That the new water and sewer service shall be installed per the direction and approval of the city Public Works Department. TAP fees shall be collected for the additional TAPS. Sewer and water services for additional dwelling, the additional dwelling units shall be extended into Lot, it'd be Lot 1, prior to the city signing the final plat. A certified reproducible Mylar copy of the final plat shall be provided to the city after the final plat has been recorded, and a building permit shall not be issued until Mylar copy is received.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions?
So, as I look at that, is, are they gonna say that those buildings are gonna be able to back up all the way toward that, that lot line? Like, as, as a duplex? There's no gonna be off, or setback off of that property line to the left?
The, the proposed property line down through the center, bisecting the two?
No, not the center, the, the one that would be, they have the property to the left of it, there.
The west property line?
Yeah. Is there gonna be any kind of setback from that property line?
Yeah. There's interior side, minimum sidecar setback of five feet.
Okay.
The structure continues through it, about the same setback distance, that's what I do with the setback encroachment. The variance to the setback encroachment for lot. Structure as it is, looking on Lot 2, it's gonna be a setback.
So, so, this technically would be more of a twin home than a duplex, though, correct? Because it would be, each of them would have a separate address, each of those. It wouldn't be like, hey, this number A and B, it would be...
Each, yeah. Each one will have its own address, each one will have its own trash collection, or trash container. The owner proposes to lease the portion on Lot 2, and live in Lot, the structure on Lot 1, and eventually, he may look at selling the unit on Lot 2.
That's, that's why I was asking, because a duplex, you'd have to sell it all at once, where separate, with more of a twin home, you could sell it separate.
Yeah, being the twin home, separate lots, as we're doing here, that gives him the ability to sell those.
He wasn't there if I had to approve it, but I just was clarifying in my own mind.
Is there any objections from the lot that's next to it?
At the planning commission meeting, there were some objections to the request, yes.
What were those objections for?
The people that showed to the meeting would prefer to see a single-family home constructed on the lot. Yeah, the duplex, or, or single-family attached dwelling, that, that was approved by the commission.
There's been, there's been public notice of this meeting here today, though, too, correct?
No, public notice is not required for the subdivision review.
I can, I can understand their hesitation to want to put a duplex right there, when the rest of those homes are all single-family homes surrounding it, correct?
There, there is a duplex, or two, located directly across the street from it.
Okay.
There are examples within that neighborhood where they have been constructed, a lot of them back in the boom time. What the property owner is proposing, it's a very modern structure. It's, it's an attractive building.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Also responding, Councilor Lynch. Testimony at the Planning and Zoning Commission was that there were 13 of these structures in that neighborhood, weren't there? They said?
Yeah, there were, there were quite a few.
No, there's quite a few in that area.
Okay, so that's not, that's not uncommon to have something like that in that area?
I think that's what the commission found, that there were...
I believe there were three alone, along Tomahawk.
And if you go down lodge pole, there's multiples, multiple. And that's, if you look at that lot, and you look at the other lots, that's really the only lot you could do this on, because you'd have access to both of them. Whereas, if you look at, if you look at the lots behind it, there is, you, there's no way of getting two, two in there. And so, that... But again, that goes back to why I want to make sure it was needed as two separate, and not just a duplex. Because I think in the twin home, overall, in the twin home setup, you get people, especially if they're, end up being owned by two different people, that care for their places a little bit better overall. That's, but that's just my opinion.
Well, that's also a reason for the subdivision process itself, so that they could be sold independent of, of each other, each lot. Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Sellers, is there a second?
I'll second.
Willing, seconding. Discussion?
I think it'll look better than trash, and vehicles, and trailers, and the people's front yards in that area. I think it's a good idea.
I don't spend much time over there, so I thought, well, thanks for clarifying that, you know, I want a bunch of single-family homes, and that being the only duplex, that was my only concern, so.
Further discussion? There's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2471. Mr. Harris, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Resolution 2471 is a resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a software finance agreement with FP Leasing Group Inc., EBA Financial Partners Group, to purchase GPS equipment and software from Tag Marshall Inc. for golf carts owned by the city and in use at the Purple Sage Municipal Golf Course. Mayor and Council, this was the, this is the agreement that, and to effect, the budget approved for this during, this equipment, during the last budget adoption process. I remember the discussion was that the, the software and the equipment is to accomplish multiple purposes. One of them is to speed up play, and the second was, it identifies when people are driving in areas where they shouldn't. So, it's supposed to alert that, that is occurring. And in, at 8 o'clock, those of us who went over to the roundhouse and were running the shuttle carts, they're already installed. This is, this is the way that leasing mechanism is a way to pay for it. So, they're there. And I've reviewed the agreement, and told Director Larson that I would turn the questions and add.
Any questions on this, before we move forward with this?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
I had a couple questions.
Go for it.
I just wanted to clarify the fees involved. As I was looking over this, the product fees are $108,444.24, and that's, looks like it's amortized. The payments are $2,246.88.
Correct.
And, um, do we feel like this is a, I mean, that's a big chunk of money? So, do we feel like that's a good expenditure? I mean, are we really going roughshod with our golf course, our golf club, our carts? Sorry. I'm looking at Jesse for...
It's time.
You know, is it, is it that way, or, because they have those little ones on Amazon that you can get for 25 bucks, that you put in the back of your car, you know?
And you get what you pay for.
Thank you, Grandpa.
If you want me to go into more detail on how these work, you're, you're not just gonna speed up the pace of play.
Okay.
You have people, and I've seen it numerous times, they drive where they're not supposed to. They'll drive on a green.
On the green, which causes more maintenance, yeah.
I've seen them, they think it's a four-wheeler half the time. They're out in the sagebrush, they're, yeah, drove it into a sage, or a sand bunker, right... They drive them, these will literally stop them. The cart will stop, and will not go any further. So, it'll give them boundaries, so they're not tearing up our golf course.
That makes sense.
The third part is, they got a built-in GPS system in them, so it, it helps you, give you yardages, it tells you distances, it tells you where the holes are at.
Helps you cheat?
Well, it's not cheating. It's just good, just, just what you're supposed to do. And then the big thing, too, is, at a central command center there in the pro shop, you're able to see where all the carts are at. So, if anybody was to steal a cart, we know where the cart's at. We've had carts stolen and drove around town for joy rides. We can't ever track those. You're tracking the carts now.
I thought that was, we were authorized when we did a parade.
Well, not, not just our parade, yeah. They can shut them off. But then in Central, too, you can see which, which groups are playing slow. And you can see that from the pro shop, going, oh, that group is playing slow, we need to go take care of them. So, it, it hits on several different elements, not just, you know, you get a cool little screen. It, it really is, it is a pretty big price tag, but I noticed that the payments don't start till April. That was my big question, why are we paying for it through the winter? We're not. We'll pay, start paying for it in April. And I, almost every golf course is going to it, because the amount of damage that the carts can do when they're drove in the wrong place, can be well over 108,000. If you have to replace a green, the cost to replace a green when it's tore up is, is upwards of $100,000.
We know how much that is.
We've done that before. So, it, it's hard to justify, I know everybody hates the money that goes to the golf course anyway, but it, it's hard to justify 108,000. This really is justified when you start looking at all the different elements that it brings.
Well, that's why I posed the question, because it was a big hefty price tag that I wasn't expecting. They have the GPS trackers that you can get and put in mobile vehicles that are a lot less money. But I didn't, you know, what this does, and if, if, you know, it's gonna save money in the long run.
And that's...
And make money, then that's... But with that price tag, it, it deserved a couple questions.
No, and it, I had questions myself, too, because when I first looked at it, I went, okay. Mine was like, why, we just, we're, we just shut the golf course down, and now we're gonna pay for them, but...
Yeah.
No, we don't start paying till April, so that's good.
Okay, now I will introduce with a motion to pass. You okay with your motion? I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Willing, seconding. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Now, I'm told we can, we can consider Resolutions 2472 and 73 together. Is that correct, Mr. Harris? If you'll read those titles?
Resolution 2472, a resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a subaward agreement between the Highway Safety Program of the Wyoming Department of Transportation, and the Evanston Police Department, to receive grant funds for occupant protection, high-visibility enforcement. Resolution 2473, a resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of the subaward agreement between the Highway Safety Program of the Wyoming Department of Transportation, and the Evanston Police Department, to receive grant funds for impaired driving, high-visibility enforcement.
Thank you, sir. Chief?
Yes, sir, your honor. Members of council, Michael Varnish, police chief. So, we've been doing this contract for a lot of years, and they do put out two of them, they're mirrored. One is for occupant protection, which is enhanced enforcement on seatbelts. We obviously have a seatbelt law in this state, but it's not a primary reason for a stop. But we do put extra officers out for other traffic offenses, and then also for the impaired driving. When you turn your radio on, and you hear the federal commercials during the holiday weekends, you know, from NHTSA, National Highway Transportation Safety Administration, to, "Don't drink and drive, police will be out in force this weekend." These are the funds that provide that, and that coordinates us all at the same time. We're gonna receive, for occupant protection, we'll receive $4,090. That's enough to provide 81 hours of enhanced enforcement. And for the impaired driving, we'll receive $8,393, which is enough to provide 167 hours of enhanced enforcement, focusing on drunk driving.
Excellent. I know that we've done this several times in the past, so...
Been done for a lot of years, I, probably more than 20.
It's been a long time, I know, yeah. Excellent. Is there introduction on Resolution 2472?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
I'll second.
Willing with a motion, Mr. Willing, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Excellent. Is there introduction on 2473?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Sellers with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Perks, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, or no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything more from the police department, chief, while you're standing right there? Anything more that we're going to repark from departments? Do you have anything more for us tonight?
No, sir, just minor beware seatbelts, and, "Don't drink and drive for the holidays." Thank you.
Don't drink and drive anytime. Mr. Newsom, back there, you have anything for us tonight, sir? Mr. Lim? Mr. O'Neil? Jacobson, you have anything more? Ms. Harris?
I do have something.
Well, it's her.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the city employees that signed up to drive the golf, golf carts today for the people voting. It was so cold. We, we did it all day until they died, so...
And I was encour, I, I'm glad you reminded us that, because I was encouraged to see Mr. Harris, all bundled up, cold, miserable, spending his time behind the wheel.
I'm not as bold as Councilor Lynch, though. I'm not as bold as Counselor Lynch, though, because I won't wear shorts.
So just thank you to all of them.
Well said.
That was above and beyond.
Absolutely. That is, that is great. Mr. Harris, you have anything for us tonight?
No, sir.
Public participation, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council for any reason?
My name is Cindy Crawford. I've been in this town for 30 years, and prior to COVID, I was attempting to open a drug and alcohol rehab center here in town. I worked at one in Los Angeles before I moved here, an upstanding facility. I'm interested in opening what is called Morning Star Recovery. I found a building, building, and I'm going to go to somewhere on Wasatch Road to see if they can facilitate a certain number of people. I found the location, it is on Front Street. I just want to give a precursor to what I'm up to these days. I started this, like I said, before COVID, and I'm very passionate about this. I think we all know someone, friends or family, who are addicted to substance, gambling. It's a problem. The drugs and the drinking is a problem in this town. It's tragic. So I'm here representing myself tonight for Morning Star Recovery, and I'm backed with an excellent program in North Hollywood, California, known as Cry Help. So I'll be updating from time to time. I have my city business license renewed, so I'm going to go from there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like this?
Yes, Your Honor.
Please come up here and give us your name and address and tell us what's on your mind, sir.
Good evening, all. So my name is Juan Hernandez. I'm the general manager to the new establishment called Wild Cannabis right here across the street from Jody's Diner. I just wanted to come by, say hi. I know I haven't been quite involved in the community since we got here, but I am planning on coming up on one of your guys' meetings on the 14th, believe, or the 13th, to talk about what we do exactly at the Wild Cannabis Shop. I know people keep thinking, a lot of stigma behind it, but we want to show people, hey, that, hey, we're not monsters, we're not meeting you behind the back alley with a trench coat. We're really highly educated people, we're all medically minded people. The owner is a combat medic. Our HR representative has helped with a lot of youth and drug abuse counseling, and well, I'm a medical assistant with a background in this EMT firefighting. And to be honest, a lot of knowledge in when it comes to the cannabis plant. We are just trying to help the community understand that cannabis is not a drug, it is a good form of medication, because there's always more than one way of how to shave the cat. But just wanted to say hi and can't wait to see you guys on, I think, the 13th or the 14th. I gotta make sure I have this written down on my notes back at work.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Anyone else that would like to address the? If that's it, we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone.